...of up to six months with the right to come back and request an additional temporary use permit. I will have Mr. Hasner testify what he did and what we need and why we need it. So if we can have Mr. Hasner sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
Frank Hasner. H.A.S.N.E.R.
Mr. Hasner, what is your relationship to the food bank?
I'm the executive director.
Okay. And the food bank is currently located where?
It is currently at 224 Churchill Ave.
And is the food bank the owner of that property, or is it a tenant?
We are a tenant.
And how long have you been a tenant there?
One year.
And you're there on a lease?
That is correct.
And for how long is the lease?
It's a five-year lease.
Okay. And does the lease provide you with an option to terminate the tenancy?
It does.
Anytime during the five-year period?
With 60 days' notice, anytime. That's correct.
Now, you moved in there a year ago, and on the property is a building?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. And also, and I'll have some photographs which I'll put into evidence, there's also, there was also a parking area adjacent to the building.
There is a parking lot that's for our use, correct.
Okay. And after you acquired the property, you constructed a gravel parking lot in the front of the building, is that correct?
A few months after, correct.
Okay. I have a package of four photographs. These photographs were taken by you?
That is correct.
And when were they taken?
This morning.
Okay. And these accurately depict the condition of the property during a normal day of operation.
That is correct.
Can I have this package of photographs marked as A1, please?
Who's the landlord?
Peter Camamas.
Okay. I just wondered whether it's a town or not.
No.
Okay.
Should be.
two photographs, does that depict the area that you put the gravel down, that you're seeking the temporary use permit for?
That is correct.
Okay. And if you flip over to the second page, that is, the bottom photograph is also the gravel area taken from a different angle, correct?
That is correct. Also showing the, there's an access easement for the back of the building, and that shows the access easement and the park, the driveway entrance, new driveway entrance off the, off the access easement driveway.
Okay. And then the upper photograph shows the original parking that was there when you purchased the building?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's still there, that original parking.
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Hasner, can you indicate to the board why you needed the additional parking?
I'll try to be somewhat brief. We moved to, for a couple of reasons, we put out a lot of food to Franklin Township residents, over 2 million pounds.
Put the microphone closer to your mouth, please.
Over 2 million pounds of food go to Franklin residents. So we needed warehouse space. We also did something pretty progressive. As food banks go, traditionally, we would hand out a package of fixed groceries. You got peanut butter and jelly, you got tomato sauce and pasta, beans and rice, no matter what you ate. Wasn't very efficient, wasn't very smart, wasn't very dignified. So what we've done is changed to what's considered client choice. Client can come now, pick out whatever food we have, and, and based on point allocations, shop just like we do. They go to a store and do the same thing that we do. They just don't have to use money, they use, they use points. So we also, instead of coming once a month and getting stuck with whatever you, whatever you get, you can now come every day and avail yourself to whatever we have that day. You can imagine a food bank, we don't have consistent inventory. We may get, particularly in the summertime, a bin of squash one day, two days later, a bin of corn. With the old system, you came, if you came the day, you got squash, you got squash, you didn't get corn for the rest of the month. You can come back the next month. Just, just not a very smart system. So fortunately and unfortunately, the system worked very well. It's doing very good, we're in our first year, and clients are coming very often and availing themselves. So the, the existing parking that's there, we want to reserve for clients, obviously. They have, they have shopping carts like you would at any of the supermarket, so we want to make sure that they get their premium spots. We have a lot of volunteers and a few staff members. We were parking on the other side where you see that, that access easement, you see the box truck. Our building was purchased by our landlord, and he bought the building next door, it's about 40 feet away. They're doing construction on that. Stuff was coming off the roofs, gates were getting closed on, on volunteers' cars. You know, they, it was a mess. So a couple of people started parking in the front, on the, on the dirt, in the mud. We called trap rock, they said they would give us a little bit of stone. We called the local excavator, they excavated, and we were able to put, put a little parking in, keep mud out of the road. And what happens, virtually, the first people that get in, usually not me, usually the guys from the warehouse, will pull right into those spots, I'll be right behind them, a couple of their office people come in, into those spots. Usually it's about five across. A volunteer or two that doesn't want to walk will, will block us in a little bit because they're going to leave before we do, and it keeps people from, from being out in the street.
Okay. So that, that new lot that you created is solely used by your employees and volunteers?
Absolutely.
And the people that come to avail themselves of the food bank, you've reserved the original parking lot for them?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's the one by the door?
The, the one that shows the long, the long parking lot?
The one?
With the car backing out, the second page, top photo, is the...
Regular parking.
That's the regular?
That's the regular parking.
Okay. Now, Mr. Hasner, you're aware that, that under normal circumstances, you should have obtained some sort of a site plan approval in order to do what you did, correct?
That is correct. If it was a permanent, there's no doubt.
Okay. Now, we're here for a temporary use permit, why are you asking for a temporary use permit rather than applying for a site plan to keep this on a permanent basis?
Several reasons. First of all, we're hoping that once the construction starts, stops on the other side, we can then park in that easement that we share with the other, with the other building, and, and that'll alleviate the problem. One of the other things we're looking at is, as part of this client choice program where the clients can, can shop, we purchased a point-of-service computer system, so people can scan out their, scan out their stuff with the codes. This will give us the ability to have people do online orders and just come and pick up, they won't be in the parking lot for very long, we can extend for an hour. We're also looking, we did a study, the southern end of town is underserved. We could also allow people to order online, perhaps distribute in the southern section of town, perhaps here on a, some evening. Some are tongue-in-cheek, but we, we could go to wherever folks need, need us the most. And that would alleviate some of the, the parking, in the main parking area, more volunteers could, could then park there.
So, so it may be in the long run that you do not need this on a permanent basis?
That, that is correct.
And that, that's your hope?
It is. This is not the ideal situation.
Okay. And in the event that those issues cannot resolve themselves, then you would, then, then make an application for, hire an engineer and make an application for site plan approval to make that parking lot permanent and pave it if necessary?
We would either, either get the approval or bring it back to its same state that it was in before, actually a little bit better, it was a little chopped up.
Okay.
Do you have a picture of, over here?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a picture of the area that is under construction that you...
I think if you looked at the report from the TRC dated October 22, 2019, and the second page of that shows the building in question, Mr. Hasner, just for the record, the building with the white roof on it is your building, correct, that you're, that you're using?
That is correct.
Okay.
The building to the left.
And then the building to the left of that is the building that's under construction, and the cream color is that access easement, that driveway, is that correct?
That is correct. You can also see it from the first and second picture that we submitted this evening. If you see, over the food bank truck, you can see the second story of the building, you see boarded up, a couple boarded up windows, that's where stuff's getting thrown out on people's cars.
How many cars are you going to be accommodating in this?
Most of the time, five, occasionally seven, if we jockey around a little bit.
I mean, it would seem to me that, and I don't, but in terms of conditions, there ought to be some limit on the number of cars that could be parking there. And, and I saw, and I don't know how you're going to be able to accommodate this recommendation, but the TRC recommendation, parking spaces should, I mean delineate it in some manner. How you're going to do that on gravel, I don't know, but at least getting some kind of limitation.
Okay. I, I don't have a problem with us eliminating to, to seven vehicles, which is what you see in, in that photograph. Delineating it is a little bit crazy, again, it's, it's...
I appreciate that.
It's, it's us, it's us pulling in there, we, it's, it's almost uniform, whoever gets their, you know, gets their first parks, five across. The sixth and seventh happens rarely, although if you look today, today, today it happens.
And I suppose you would also, as they suggest, have signage there so that there'd be only parking for employees and...
Well, it's sort of the other way around, there's signage where the people that come to the food bank to get food...
I understand that, but there ought to be some kind of a sign saying this is...
We can...
Yeah. And, and if you look in, at the second page, you may not be able to see the sign very well, it says "Food Bank Deliveries," and that's, so unless you were making, if you're making a delivery, obviously go there and pull in all the way, but otherwise, there's no reason to go in there. But we could say, we could put another sign out there that says "Employees Only."
Well, I mean, just because if things are as exciting there as, and somebody sees cars that are parked there, it's highly understandable that somebody who shouldn't be, could be there, just, it doesn't have to be a large sign, just...
We can do that.
And, and again, referring back to the TRC report, what are your hours of operation?
We're open for client services from 10 to 2, Monday through Thursday, excuse me, Monday through Wednesday, 10 to 7 at night on Thursdays, and 10 to 12 on Saturdays.
Okay. Is there any lighting out in that new, that parking area now?
There's one spotlight in, in the middle of the, in, off the middle of the building.
And does that adequately illuminate that parking area?
Certainly during the day.
Well, you're, there's only one night that you're there, no, you're only there one night.
One night, yeah. Occasionally, we have meetings, but then board members will park in the, in the regular, in the regular parking lot, and that's, that's lit.
So in, in your opinion, there's no need for any additional lighting there, at least at this time?
No. And it's only, you know, only employees will be parking there. They know where they're at.
There was also a question in the TRC report, I don't know what it had to do with the requested application, but there was an issue of a water line leak, can you indicate?
Again, we're, we're tenants, so an outside water leak, we wouldn't have a lot to do with, but Mr. Lanford suggested I call the landlord, he said there was a water line there, and they turned it off at the curb, so there should, should be no issue.
So there's no water line, or there's no water leaking at the present time?
That's my understanding.
Okay. I think we've addressed all of the issues, I have no further questions of Mr. Hasner.
What's the, what's the timeframe? So the ordinance allows six months, and then I guess you'd have to come back for an extension of six months, so what's the...
We're, we're requesting a six-month temporary use permit to, to use that area within that six-month period. Hopefully, we will make a determination as to whether we will need it in the future and come back for another six months, or we may make an application for site plan approval to convert that to permanent parking.
So you're requesting the six-month start today?
We're, we're asking for six months from now, yes, please.
Anything from the board? But the record show there's no public present. Any, need anything else for temporary motion?
No. I mean, I, if, they did make some, there were some timeframes or some conditions that were imposed.
I would move that the conditions that I discussed, seven vehicles, that there be signage, that it be a six-month, that it be limited to a six-month permit, and that you can come back if you're not, need further time.
And, and no delineation of the spaces and no additional lighting?
Right. Well, I'm, okay.
Yeah, I think...
I wasn't talking about the negative, I was talking about what you needed to do.
I think with respect to the delineation of the spaces, I think you could word it something like that they shall park as shown on this exhibit, because that, this basically does show it kind of maxed out, and there is an area there for, you know, cars to move back and forth. I think you add one more car and that parking lot's going to clog up. So I think, you know, they have to park as, as, as shown on that exhibit.
No problem with that at all.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Yes.
Laura Grauman?
Yes.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepard?
Yes. And let me say that, Mr. Hasner, you did a great job in keeping your presentation brief.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Good luck with it, keep up the good work. You're only here because it's so successful, otherwise you wouldn't have the problems. But again, I'm surprised that a zoning officer and everything like that didn't know he needed to...
I forgot, it's been a long time. I'm not still in there, though. Thank you, I also invite you to come and see this, see the place. It is pretty amazing, and you should be proud of it, we only do it because of the community, so thank you.
Okay. Can I have, I have the next application, Mr. Chairman, can, can I have two minutes, and I'll be right back?
Okay. We'll break for two minutes.
While we're waiting, when, when did we have zoning, started having zoning laws in Franklin? Was it 1955?
Fifty-eight, right?
Fifty-eight, okay.
May have been zoning officer at that time, I'm not sure. Been around a while.
He went further, he went further into, he was here when I started.
It was more like the 90s, yeah.
Huh?
It was more like the 90s, I think, when he was...
Yeah. Problem, yeah. Other one, please.
The next hearing would be Aleisha Jadu, ZBA 190044. This is an application for certification of pre-existing non-conforming use to continue the, to use the existing two-family home as a two-family home at 820 Hamilton Street, Block 145, Lots 15 and 16, in the HBD zone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to try to make this very brief. This is an existing dwelling that is located on Hamilton Street. My client purchased the property, was going to rehab it, and then ran into an issue with the building department, who was indicated that it may not have been a two-family dwelling, and stopped him from construction. So we are here to get a certification of a pre-existing non-conforming use. The property is currently in the HBD district. The HBD district does not allow two-family dwellings, nor, and the zone requirement is 10,000 square feet, this lot is only 5,000 square feet, so obviously, it is not a conforming use at the present time. I'm going to call Mr. Jadu as my first witness. You have to have the microphone up right in your mouth, stand up and be sworn.
So do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Iram Jadu.
Oh, your last?
J.A.D.D.U.
Thank you.
Okay, you can sit down, Ricky. This property is owned, actually entitled by Aleisha Jadu. No, you, go ahead, you can talk.
Yes.
Okay. And who is that?
My wife.
And she's sitting next to you?
Yes.
Okay. But you're the one who does all the work?
Yes.
Sounds about right.
When did you purchase the property?
I think we closed October 2nd.
Of what year?
2019.
Okay. And was this a property that was at one time foreclosed and was purchased by somebody in a foreclosure?
Yes.
Okay. And then you purchased it from the person who purchased it in a foreclosure?
Yes.
And before doing anything and acquiring it, did you do any due diligence? Did you go to Franklin Township to make a determination as to whether the house had any violations, what, what it was listed on in the tax records?
Usually, my realtor does that, so she did that for me.
Okay.
Before we put any offer in, she usually goes, find out how much is the taxes and violations.
Okay.
That's the most, two important things we need to know.
Okay. And when, and what did you learn when you did that investigation? What did the tax office indicate that the property was listed at?
It was a two-family, legal two-family, and, and the tax amount.
Okay. Now, when you went through the house, did it appear to you to be a two-family house?
Yes.
And why do you say that?
Because the first thing we look for, how many electrical meters, gas meters, that's very important, and the kitchen, and the bathroom, and separate entrance.
Okay. So now, describe the house to the board. On the first floor of that house, what was there when you first purchased the property?
It was a full kitchen, bedroom, and two-bedroom.
Okay. And where was the entrance to that first-floor unit?
Well, it's two entrances, one, you can access it from the front, and you can access it from the back also.
Okay. The front being Hamilton Street, and the back being the back of the house?
Yes.
Okay. And then upstairs, how many rooms were upstairs, and what, what did the rooms consist of?
Was one room, the kitchen, and a full bathroom.
Okay. And, and two bedrooms upstairs?
Well, the look of it, it probably might be able to say two rooms, but we consider it as one, so we didn't really worry about it.
Okay. And did that upstairs unit have a separate entrance?
Yes.
And where was that entrance?
In the back.
Okay. And then, after you purchased the property, did you proceed to do some demo work on the property?
Yes.
Okay. And after doing the demo work, did you apply for a building permit?
Well, we applied for the building permit before we started the demo.
Okay. And did the building department issue you your building permit?
No, they did not issue the building permit as yet, but when we submit the permits, we were told that we can, because of the condition of the roof, and we can start the demo, and so we can complete the roof and, and go ahead.
Okay. And then after a while, did they stop you?
Why, they never stopped, completely stopped us, we waited for the permit like three and a half weeks, and we wasn't getting anything, and we, I came to the building department, and then they told me that they sent a letter out stating that it's not a two-family, and I need to change that.
And, and at that point in time, you stopped everything?
I stopped everything.
And made an application?
Yes.
I'll show you a bunch of photographs, and I guess we should mark these as A1. And these are photographs, let me pass them out, and then you can talk to the board members. And I don't believe I have enough for all the board members, so you may have to share.
While you're doing that, is this an investment property?
Yes.
And if I could, at the same time, ask a question here. So you'd said that you spoke to the tax assessor, and you had said that they told you, they said it was a legal two-family, or did they say it was a two-family?
No, no. My realtor is the first one that spoke to them, because before I put the offer in, I really like to find out how much is the taxes, because sometimes the listings can say a different amount. So she came and she found out those stuff, and she makes sure, but, you know...
Well, my question is this, my question is, you said that the tax assessor said it was a quote "legal two-family"?
It is, no.
Did they say, did the tax assessor said it was a quote "legal two-family"?
Yes.
Or did they just say they have it as a two-family?
They have it as a two-family.
Okay. Because that's two different things.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm personally not speaking to the legality of it, but the tax office does not say whether it's legal or not. They just say it exists or not. So they just said to you, they have been there, and they identified it as a two-family house?
Why, the realtor has spoke to them first, and that's...
I'm just making that, because it is a distinction, and, and the tax assessor did not opine whether it's legal or not.
The tax assessor does not give a legal opinion, that is correct.
Okay. I'm just correcting the record, because...
Okay.
It's, it's an important distinction, because, no, no, no staff member, including the tax assessor, said it's legal, that's why you're here?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Ricky, real quickly, can you take the board through these photographs and indicate what they show, and in your experience, you are a builder, right, and, and a renovator of houses?
Yes.
Okay. And how long have you been doing that?
We've been doing this for almost 15 years now.
Okay. And, and most of the houses that you work on are older houses that you rehab?
Yes.
Okay. So you can sort of determine the quality and the age of some of the things that are contained in the house?
Yes, yes.
Can you indicate what those photographs show?
Okay. The first page, that's the two electrical meter. The second page is showing the two breaker box.
Do, do you know how old the electric meters are?
Well, looking at them, you know, looking at them, I can tell the original to the house because of the paint job in the back of it and stuff like that. I can tell it was not in, all the wires in the back and stuff look original. So it was not in like added after, because the way they painted it, you can tell.
Okay.
The second page is the breaker box, both of them, and the third page is the second-floor bedroom. That's the tub what was there. And the fourth page, why, is showing the kitchen, what I demoed, the stove was still there. We didn't show the stove out as yet, but...
And that was on the second floor?
Yes.
Okay.
And the fifth page is showing, you might have to look very carefully, it's going to have the sewer line for the kitchen, the stock was still there. So we took the kitchen out, but the drain pipe, everything was still there.
Which floor is the last page?
The second, the second floor.
The next, the next to the last page is the second floor?
Yes.
And in your opinion, all of those fixtures and, and items that you saw predate 1959 in your, based on your experience?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to also move into evidence, which is probably the most dispositive thing and probably I should have done it at the beginning. There was recorded in the Somerset County Clerk's Office in deed book eight thirteen, page three ninety-five. Unfortunately, I only have one of these, but I'll put it into evidence. Was an agreement of sale of this property, uh, and in the agreement of sale, and that agreement of sale was dated, uh, the seventh day of, of November nineteen fifty-three. And it indicates that included in the sale are the blind storm window screens, storm doors, two electric ranges, fireplaces, cabinets, both kitchens, barbecue grill, and other things. So this document, which was recorded in nineteen fifty-three in the Somerset County Clerk's Office, clearly indicates when a contract was entered into for the sale of that property in nineteen fifty-three, it was a two-family house. So I would like to move down into evidence as A2. And, and that document that, uh, I put into evidence was obtained by your realtor and given to you and then provided to me, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I have no further questions of this witness.
Anything from the board?
I have a question, Peter. In the documents that, that we got, we have a survey that is, that is, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, did he get a, a survey of no change when he closed this property?
This was a survey that he obtained when he purchased the property, which shows the existing two-story brick dwelling plus the garage. So this was the condition of the property when he purchased it. The survey doesn't tell you whether it's a single-family or a two-family dwelling. It just shows you what's on the property.
I have one, the A1, uh, document in the TRC. In the application, rather. There's three plans.
Or the floor plans?
The floor plans.
Yeah.
So the, the first pick, can we talk about?
I can have the architect testify those, if you still want to hear testimony concerning what's, what's there, but I'll have the ar, the architect provide it those and we can have him sworn.
Okay.
Are there any more questions of this witness before we move on?
Please raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name, spell your last, and provide for your professional address, please.
Bradley Valerius. I work at Anchored Architects. My address, all right, you went to spelling first? It's a V as in Victor, A-L-E-R-I-U-S.
Take the mic.
Close it. Okay.
Mr. Valerius, you are licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And how long have you been so licensed?
Approximately twenty years.
Excellent.
Okay, uh, first of all, with respect to the question that was asked by Ms. Bethay, you prepared the floor plans that were submitted in conjunction with this application, which was a one-sheet document marked as A1?
Yes.
And is that an existing condition plan or a proposed plan?
It's a proposed plan with the dotted lines under it as the existing conditions that were being removed.
Now, you familiar with the property, have been through the subject property, uh, prior to this evening?
Yes.
Okay, and the, uh, question that was asked by one of the board members concerning the age of some of the, uh, panels and boxes and everything that Ricky testified to, in your, can you opine as to the age of those and, and also as to the age of the house, having been through it?
Sure. The two electrical panels, in my opinion, are original. From my research, there are two four-screw-in type breakers in each panel with approximately like a sixty amp main. Those panels were being phased out in the early sixties. So, in my opinion, you know, those panels were in that house, at least in the nineteen fifties, if not earlier. The, um, service cables out to the pa, uh, meters were all the original cloth braid, um, exteriors. And the upstairs with the plumbing, the one picture that's not too clear, is the, the original cast iron, uh, vent line showing the original Y going to the kitchen sink. And the bathtub that's in there was the original cast iron tub. And basically, both floors, the wall materials were original before the demolition. The materials were exactly the same condition upstairs as downstairs, so nothing was really retrofitted at any time, um, after the original, uh, construction of the house.
Can you tell, looking at the materials, the age of the materials, is there a type of material?
It's old. I mean, it's not even lath and plaster. It was a, a fiber board with a plaster finish put over it. So, I mean, they haven't used that in a long time.
And, and by a long time, prior to nineteen fifty-nine, for sure?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Anybody else on the board?
So, just, if you can, the, the, the plans on A1, so I'm assuming it's basement, first floor, second floor. So, the basement, what, what's, what is and, what was and is in the basement?
Somewhere down the line, someone went down there and, and put rooms. The owner of the house is taking all that stuff out because it's, it's not basically allowed. It's, it's illegal structures that were placed down there.
Okay, so this plan is showing walls coming out, looks like there's a full bath coming out?
Yes.
And that's in the process of being demoed?
Yeah.
And then the second floor, the, or the first floor and the second floor, or, so you're saying the dash is what was there?
Correct.
So on the first floor, what, um, what's changing? What's, what's the before and after on the first floor?
The first floor, he's just making the bathroom a little bit bigger, because there is just literally no room to turn around in the existing bathroom. So we were pushing that into the bathroom towards the rear of the building, and he was just removing the walls between the kitchen and the living room.
Okay, got it. So then otherwise, that bedroom that's in the back left, the kitchen that's there in the back right, the living room and that second bedroom, those are all existing?
Yes.
Okay, so you're removing, um, okay, I can see that, the walls between the kitchen and the living room and modifying the ba, the bathroom. And then, then the second floor, it looks like you're not changing, or it looks like maybe the same thing, maybe changing the bathroom around a little bit?
Yes, the bathroom had the tub along the side where the toilet is now.
Okay.
So we're just pushing that to the outside wall to, again, make more...
So the before and after was, there was a kitchen there before?
Yes.
And it looks like it's staying in the same place with some modifications?
Yes, he's extending a wall just to get a little more cabinet space.
Got it. Thank you.
Are there anything, are there any plans for what's going to be in the basement?
It's, it's going to be empty.
Storage. Just storage.
Exterior walls.
Any else?
What's, what's in the garage? Is there anything in the garage?
Have to ask the owner on that one.
Okay, so what we heard was it's just storage. Just, thank you.
I have nothing further.
Okay, uh, make a, open to the public since there is another person here.
That, that, that's our realtor. If we had needed, I would have called her, so she's here for us.
And there is no, uh, public present.
You've got nothing to say?
Yeah.
All right, very briefly, Mr. Chairman, I, I think based on the, the legal document that was filed and of record, it was clear that in nineteen fifty-three, this was a two-family house and had two kitchens. Plus the testimony of both the current owner and the architect verified what was on the site, which buttresses that, that, that that house was built prior to nineteen fifty-nine, which is the test. And I would ask for the certification of a pre-existing non-conforming use as a two-family dwelling. And obviously, the floor plans can, which were part of the submission, would be how we are going to, uh, finish the house.
It seems to me that the proofs have been satisfied. The move approval of this application, uh, with the condition that the, uh, house be developed in the same manner as the floor plans submitted.
With no rooms in the basement?
With no room, yeah, that the basement be used for storage.
Second?
Second.
Anthony Caldwell?
Yes.
Laura Grauman?
Yes.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes, good luck with it. Looks like it has to be a huge improvement.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to close?
Moved.
I guess that's, that's a vote in and of itself.